Good evening. I want to welcome those here in attendance and online to the April 3, 2025 meeting, this Thursday evening, of the Johnson City City Commission, held at the Water and Sewer Services Complex. It's currently 6:00 PM, and we will call the meeting to order. If everyone in just a moment would stand for Minister Georgina Washington as she gives the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, and everyone who is joining us. Thank you for this opportunity to invite the Lord into this space. May we bow our heads? Heavenly Father, we thank you for today's blessings, today's measure of grace and mercy, all those blessings that we have seen, and all of those that have gone unseen. We just so thank you. And now, Lord, we invite your presence into this space, so that you may be in and about everything that goes on in this meeting and this business of today. Lord, as you have said, let nothing be conducted in disarray. And so, we ask that your presence and your spirit be an integral part of all the discussions, the conversations, the solutions, and the resolutions that take place in this space and this place today. We thank you that your will will be done, and we thank you in advance for what you are about to do. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, your first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting held on Thursday, March 6, 2025.
Are there any additions, corrections?
Remove approval.
Second, Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Mayor, we do have a number of people signed up under the public comment on the agenda.
Okay. So, as a reminder, public comment is open to the first 12 people who sign up, with considerations given to those who may represent a different side of an issue. Comments must be germane to tonight's agenda and are limited to three minutes. Mr. Willis will keep the time for us. And some of you may be doing this for the first time ever. This is an opportunity for the Commission to hear from you. We do not engage or respond, we listen. The three, um, lost the, there we are. The three minutes are for your comments, not ours, and the comments should not include personal attacks or vulgar language. Because we have people requesting to speak on two different items tonight, we will have public comments on one item and then the other, so that they're together. I will now open the public comment for item 8.2. First up, Tony Tredway.
Please don't touch the mic. Good evening, Commissioners, and all those who are watching at home. I stand in opposition to the annexation and the rezoning of the property off Hopper Road for 105 condo units. I'd like to first introduce everyone here who came tonight to find the City Commission meeting on the other end of town to stand in opposition of this. If you're in opposition of the Hopper Road annexation, please stand up. I'd also like to present a petition of people in the neighborhood, a total of 37 people, who have signed in opposition of tonight's decision on whether or not to annex this property, and they are all in opposition. You know, I really, I'm enamored by you guys and the hard work that you do, and the graciousness and the openness that you've had in us listening in to the way you are considering this annexation. So, I thank you very much. I view the City Commission as two things, visionaries and great risk managers. And tonight, I want you to manage a risk, and that's Indian Ridge Road. It is a hazard. Traffic studies by Randy Trivet and your traffic officials have said it's unsafe today, and we cannot allow another 105 condo units to be built basically a stone's throw away from Indian Ridge Road. We've got to protect those lives, and you don't want to wake up some morning and hear that a school bus or a city trash truck has killed somebody on Indian Ridge Road. It is really a traffic hazard, found out by you guys. Once we improve that, the traffic's only going to get worse, because the access will be much better. So, what I'm basically asking you tonight is to do this. Proclaim that the road is unsafe, it's going to take millions of dollars to improve that road, and the city has its own financial challenges. Mayor Hunter just admitted that it's going to take years for the budget to recover from recent spending. So, I ask that you do this. Put a moratorium on big developments on Indian Ridge Road until the road is fixed, because nothing else is going to protect people, especially the addition of 105 more families off the road. This is nothing against the people who are living at Archer's Point. I feel sorry for those folks, because they've got conditions there that are unsatisfactory. For example, there's a 12-foot retention pond that needs to have a fence there, but people have put a jungle gym up two feet away from it.
Thank you, Mr. Trivet.
Thank you for consideration. Vote no. Put a moratorium on this disaster.
Thank you, sir. Next on the public comment, Jason Witten.
And Mr. McSpadden will adjust the volume, so you don't have to touch the microphone.
Okay, I don't have to touch the microphone?
Yeah.
All right.
He should be able to adjust based on how your level of speaking is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to get straight to the point, but I'm relatively a new resident to Johnson City. My wife, two kids, and I moved here from Southern California in June of 2023 to escape the high-density neighborhoods, like the one being proposed on the Fox property. We intentionally chose a low-density neighborhood with houses on a decent-sized lot to raise our family. We love our new neighborhood and city. This newly proposed development would be directly behind our property. While we knew this open land would be developed one day, we hoped it would be in harmony with the low-density neighborhoods immediately surrounding it. Larger lots complement the existing surrounding community in keeping additional traffic congestion to a minimum. This neighborhood has already been impacted by Archer's Point, a large single-family residential development still under construction. Archer's Point is adding 120 homes to the immediate area. The increase in population from this development is already impacting traffic and safety on Indian Ridge Road. While Indian Ridge is considered a collector road, it is narrowly, it is narrow and curvy with a very sharp curve midway through it. There are often accidents at this curve which completely shut down the road. Exiting Indian Ridge onto West Market Street in the afternoons requires quite a wait as traffic backs up at least 10 to 15 car lengths. Woodland Elementary School is located on Indian Ridge. Traffic in the mornings only slows down to the school zone speed limit when patrols, when a patrol car is parked in front of the school. Traffic zooms by on the other days and makes it difficult to safely get out of the school's parking lot after dropping children off in the morning. There is a middle-turning lane approaching from the east, but not from the west. When school traffic backs up from the west, cars speed around those waiting to turn into the parking lot. My wife has witnessed many near collisions and heart-stopping moments while waiting in the afternoon car line. I understand the need to encourage the development of affordable housing units in the city. I support this initiative, but want to help ensure that this beautiful and charming city does not become too much like the city in California that I recently moved from. Compressing 8.5 units per acre in the middle of the beautiful low-density neighborhood will change the feel and culture of our area. High-density neighborhoods like that should be built closer to main roads that can handle the inevitable additional traffic and congestion. A strategic plan for the location of high-density neighborhoods should be developed, instead of allowing developers to propose them whenever a piece of land becomes available in the middle of existing single-family neighborhoods. Are you willing to let developers control the future of our city? I have met with many neighbors on Hopper Road and the surrounding streets since this development was proposed. We are all joining together to oppose this high-density development in the middle of our neighborhood. The issues it will bring will far outweigh the current benefits we enjoy living here. I ask that you be strategic about the future land development here in Johnson City. Decisions made today will have long-term implications. Let's make decisions that lead the city in positive direction for both of them. Make sure.
Next up on the list is Jay Miller. Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Appreciate your allowing this time. I really haven't got much to add beyond what has already been said, but I do think it's important. I've lived in Johnson City for about 20 years, and when I first moved here, State of Franklin Road had very little traffic. Now, on State of Franklin Road, if you try to get on the highway at 5:00 in the afternoon, you're basically backed up to traffic lights, and that reflects the growth of Johnson City. And Indian Ridge Road just can't handle more traffic than it already has. And I would point out to you that I think Johnson City needs to take a serious look at the pathways around it, and the traffic has really become a major issue in this town. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Charles Allen.
I try to keep my speech short. If it was long, I'd get Jason to say it for me. He did a good job. I'm Charles Allen. We live in Huntington Green. My family and I have lived there for 30-plus years. We've been driving Indian Ridge Road for 30-plus years, including our kids. We're adamantly opposed to the Hopper Road annexation and development. Per the city's own traffic study, Indian Ridge can't handle the current traffic, much less any additional traffic. The road doesn't have any shoulders, it has deep ditches along both sides, there's a blind hill and a curve just before you get to the entrance to the proposed development. Reminds me of a book, some of you will remember this, Ralph Nader wrote many years ago called Unsafe at Any Speed. It was about the Corvair. It could have been about Indian Ridge Road. It's a good title. Before any further annexations or developments are allowed, Indian Ridge needs to be brought up to city standards. This road should be widened, shoulders added, curves added, gutters, sidewalks from Woodland School to Market Street. That's the standard the city requires of developers, and that's the standard the city should hold themselves to when they improve a road. There also needs to be a traffic light in turn lanes at Market Street. When we came out of our subdivision to come over here a few minutes ago, traffic has backed up from Market Street, past the subdivision. So, somebody was nice enough to let us out, but there are a ton of cars down to the left of our subdivision. We couldn't turn right, which would have been the shorter way to go, because traffic's backed up there, and you couldn't turn left, and this is a quarter mile. I mean, that's what I'm saying. There's no, there's already too much traffic on that road, especially with the recent D.R. Horton development. And the last thing, I want you to think about this, the city's aware that we've got a road that can't handle current traffic. If you were to allow additional development, and this is pretty touchy, especially with what's going on right now, does that place any liability on the city? If there's a wreck, or if a child, or anybody else is killed that's trying to walk along the road, and that traffic has increased because the city has allowed future development, knowing that the road can't handle it? Does that put some culpability there? You know will be named. And when I say "we," I mean the city and the taxpayers in any lawsuit. So, I think that's something we need to really take a look at. I appreciate the job you guys do, and I are doing, and I would respectfully ask that you vote no on this annexation and development, and not allow any further development on Indian Ridge, not one house, until the road's brought up to city standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next is Anthony Everhart.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I echo the comments that have come before, also concerned about the ongoing development off of Indian Ridge and the plans to continue to put homes on that road when the road does not support further city development. If we're going to have city-type developments, we should have city-type roads that support them. Archer's Point now has a growing population and is not even near capacity yet. At some point, will house dozens, if not more, of children who can't even access the elementary school less than two-tenths of a mile away by sidewalk. It's too dangerous to walk that road. The road has limited sightlines, it has little to no shoulder at most places, it is not safe for people to walk. So, if we're going to have city developments, we need city infrastructure to support, and that includes a road that has appropriate curbs, drainage, and sidewalks. So, I would like to see no further high-density developments in the area until the roads can support that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Edwin Gwynn.
It seems like most of the comments have addressed most of my concerns. When it comes to safety on Indian Ridge Road, I live in Huntington Green, and from my house, I can see Indian Ridge Road right in front of my house, and then off it goes on to the field. And since I've been there, I've seen one miss on the corner, and as soon as you hit the edge, you have about nine feet, and drops about eight to 12 inches. Once your tire gets there, you're kind of stuck. I've seen them go off, hit this tree, cross the street at the neighbor, someone went off and hit the stump. One time, a lady was coming, caught the edge of the broken road, she went off, struck the telephone pole in front of my house, and I went down to help her, and it was an elderly lady. And then, another time, off in the field, when they were coming, the edge caught them again, another car. That one went off the road, struck a tree, the tree fell on top and collapsed the top of the car. So, when I look at Indian Ridge Road and I say, hey, it's unsafe, I'm speaking from personal experience, it's just the accidents I've seen from my house, not counting the ones I haven't seen. So, you have to develop. You know, there's talk about, well, it's similar to the density nearby, which really isn't true. There's two small R3 parcels that are there. Everything else is R2. You've got Archer's Point, which is a whole nother thing that that was approved, but you don't want that kind of approval there. Somewhere else, fine. Go ahead, maybe R2, R2A, something that's reasonable, that matches everything else, and that would be good. And then, with Indian Ridge and the road and the way it collapses from Poplar Ridge as you head toward Johnson City, there's a drainage ditch that comes right along the edge of that road, and that's what's washing out the road. So, every day I hear them, you know, if they're landscapers and they're carrying a cart, they're going off that edge, people going off that edge. So, that's just part of the particular safety concerns that I just wanted to mention.
Thank you, sir. Next, we will have public comment on item 5.1, settlement and VP et al. versus City of Johnson City. And first on the list to speak is David Adams.
Good evening.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm David Adams, 3th Government Court, got my own little timer here to keep up. So, this is mostly directed to the four returning members of this board. You recently voted to settle a lawsuit regarding actions that occurred during your tenure. Not a single one of you has expressed accountability, remorse, or a desire for truth. Every ounce of financial good you have done for our city up to this point has been eclipsed. I hope you understand that this $28 million settlement is now your greatest contribution. You chose to make nice when you should have made right. You will never convince the residents of this city that you did everything you could if you continued to do everything you shouldn't. You looked the other way, as the police department ducked accountability. You haven't even done an Internal Affairs investigation. The Dago Report calls this out directly, Section 6, Item 3, Finding Number 5. And no, pausing investigation because of lawsuits is not a standard practice. It's a cowardly choice that you made with no basis. Departments that care about integrity don't wait years to find out what went wrong. You chose to early retire the two top officers of the police department in the middle of a recruiting crisis. You retroactively spun this as some sort of responsive leadership change, but no, you quietly let Turner and Peters out the back door. You stand by a city manager who blamed the victims, a city manager who tried to buy Sean's house while he was on the run, and then decided to lie about it. I have Kathy's text messages here with me, if anyone wants them. I'm glad that we have some institutional changes to our department, but a new kitchen is pretty meaningless, and the fridge still has rotten meat in the back. These allegations are heinous, compelling, and now on the national radar. When you engage with the public, it doesn't need to be vetted by PR. You're not on a corporate board, you don't serve at the pleasure of shareholders. You are on the people's board, your only redress that citizens have is through you, and your authority over the city's business is absolute. To put it bluntly, the buck stops with you. If you are serious about listening, here are some items to consider. I urge you to see to a proper internal investigation yesterday. I urge you to divest the city from transactions involving Shannon Castillo, who does not represent our values. I urge you to openly reconsider Kathy Ball's employment, and I urge you to show an ounce of respect for the nearly 100 victims and families that look to you for leadership. Laura Shay Trent deserved better. Michaela Evans deserved better. I could take three minutes just rattling off names of good people who deserve better. I urge you to engage with citizen concerns directly without looking back at PR for guidance.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next, Victoria Hewlett.
My name is Victoria Hewlett. First, I want to genuinely thank Mayor Hunter for responding, being willing to put this item on the agenda, and recognizing how significant and traumatic this ordeal has been to the community. I hope that you will all recognize in this room not only the anger and frustration, which is certainly present and justified, but also the resilient, loving, compassionate community here that just wants to see things get better, and wants to have a seat at the table as we move forward in pursuit of accountability, justice, and real solutions that will ensure sexual assault victims are taken seriously when they report a crime. First, I want to suggest that the City Commission host a series of town halls to foster sustained community dialogue. I don't think we can come to real solutions until that sustained dialogue happens. We have precedent for this. As years ago, when this news first started breaking, I worked with Kathy Ball to plan listening sessions with the community. I think that was a decent start, but not enough. I would love to see us have these meetings include real solution workshopping, bringing sexual assault experts and victim service providers into the room to dialogue between the community and city leadership, and workshop ideas for solutions together. Just last night, ETSU held a session with a group of such professionals. I'm sure folks like this could be mobilized again. Second, I believe the city should bring in an advisory board that can assist the police department in handling reports from victims in a responsible way. I understand some changes have been made after the release of the Dago Report. If great progress has been made there, I don't think it's been communicated well to the public. We should understand people are out there living very complicated lives, working two or three jobs, trying to survive, sometimes single parents. Not everyone can come out to every meeting, but people still want to be engaged. An advisory board could be a trusted liaison that could communicate actions being taken by the city through the press, email marketing, and more. Third, I really want to see our community get some sense of accountability and transparency in this case, and I don't know exactly the specifics of how all of that should be carried out, but I do know that without accountability and transparency, anything else will feel empty to people. I've heard city officials say they don't want this issue to define us. I don't either. It does not define us. We are far more than this stain that has been put on our city. But the only way to not let public distrust of our city institutions for many years to come continue, we need to be brave, face this issue head-on, be willing to work through the emotions, be willing to seek real accountability, and proactively involve the public in the reconciliation process. And I want to end by saying I have all the faith and the ability of this community and the people that showed up today to come together, to move through this issue, to come out on the other side with more accountable and more ethical city government than ever, and I hope you all will be a part of that process.
Next, we'll invite Mr. Brad Bat.
Good evening, y'all. I appreciate you taking this necessary first step to listen, and I see all of you listening, and I think you are going to try to do the job that you think is necessary, but this is a major problem that has, as you can see, a lot of people in the city upset, a lot of people scared, women concerned that they cannot be protected by our police, and those are real issues. And I hope that you continue to listen, and you take them in the spirit that they're brought here, because I personally think that at least a few members on this commission are very dismissive of ideas. In the last year, we saw when the city had some things it wanted to promote, like the changes to the commission, to the charter, you commented that people who had different opinions didn't share values of East Tennessee. I think that's wrong. So, I hope this commission, especially on this issue, will recognize that preventing rape and protecting women in our community is not a partisan issue, is not a Republican issue, or a Democrat issue, and that there's a void of trust that could be repaired here, and it's going to have to reach across political lines, especially when the head of one party is a rapist. But you have a lot of people willing here in this room to do some of that work, and I hope you will listen to them. They've brought a lot of good ideas. Organizations here, the Democratic Party has some ideas, the Northeast Democratic Socialist Alliance has some ideas. I hope you will listen to them and not dismiss them. And there are many Republicans that are mad. I imagine the fiscal conservatives are up in arms. 28 million, it's a lot of money, and we have two more lawsuits, right? I care about this community, too. I have a 7th grade daughter, 13, and she's going to graduate in 2030 from Science Hill High School. I've lived here for 15 years. Todd, you've been here for 30. I'm a member of this community, and I bring my values with me, and so do these people. So, I ask that you listen, and I see many of you writing things down. I think that's really good. I think that you're listening. And then, we want action. We see what this commission can do when you have a mission, such as carving out a law, a state law, to regulate alcohol. Show us the same temerity on this issue, to pursue real accountability and transparency, and show the nation what a city can look like with police that is not overfunded and unregulated, but that truly protects and serves a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bat. Next, we have Ms. Emma Sherlin.
Good evening. Can I move this?
He can adjust from the, yeah, he'll take care.
Can you, can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay.
And you don't have to go to it, he'll adjust it, so you don't have to be uncomfortable.
Okay, I can sit back. Thanks. Okay. My name is Emma Gray Sherlin, and I've been a Tri-Cities resident all my life. Like many others here, I want to put my unique skills to use to make our community a safe and loving place for all of us. It is courageous of us to acknowledge that our city is not a safe and loving place right now. The reality is that the efficacy of our systems of justice depend on the money, effort, and integrity of the people we put in charge of those systems. The Shawn Williams case exemplifies that those in charge with managing the money, effort, and people our government relies on to function do not know how to do so. Furthermore, the officers included in Kat Doll's lawsuit are fundamentally incapable of fulfilling their duties. Every one of you who made the choice to protect Shawn Williams also made the decision to forfeit the right to your positions. Every one of you who made the choice to protect Sean Williams also made the decision to forfeit the right to your positions. Rather than make you feel shame for the structural failures that have resulted in unspeakable harm for the guaranteed 60 survivors of Sean Williams' terror and a $27 million problem for the taxpayer, we want to work with you to see to it that the culture and structures of racism, sexism, and abuse in our area are completely dismantled, or we will do everything that we can to replace you. Because there are more than enough people in this city who are brave enough to hold Johnson City's systems of injustice and culture of abuse right in front of our eyes and learn to actually heal it from the inside out, not settle it away with lawsuits and happy retirement wishes. We are not at the end of this scandal, even if you all wish we were. We're at the very beginning. The people of Johnson City ask you for a town hall so we can all collectively decide an agenda for how to proceed from here. We want all of the facts and lingering questions on the table, and we want survivors to be at the center of deciding priority. There are still officers to terminate, independent investigations to conduct, rape kits to test, and testimonies to be honored. It might be tempting to prioritize the reputation and status of yourselves and others in positions of authority who have been implicated in this corruption, but I promise you that it will only put a Band-Aid on an issue we could get to the bottom of right now. And that Band-Aid is bound to cost us more time and money in the future than it will cost to appropriate the time and money we have to put capable, competent, and self-loving people and procedures in place so that we never find ourselves in this position again. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvan Bruni.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners, leaders. Thank you very much for this opportunity to let the residents speak. No one wants to see the city or JCPD fail, but clearly trust has been broken, and many residents are still being harmed by this situation. So I have four sets of questions that come in complement to everything that has been said so far, and I hope you will provide responses publicly, either in this meeting or in a different public engagement. Number one, how do you reconcile the cognitive dissonance of paying $28 million in a settlement while at the same time saying that the city and JCPD did nothing wrong? That just doesn't work. Number two, on the payment of $27 million out of the city reserve, how is that massive amount of money not compromising the city's future, our rainy day and emergency funds? How are you going to replenish those reserves, especially in the context of the Johnson Building Development Incentives and other very large projects that have been discussed before? Number three, now that this case has made national news, what accountability steps are you individually and collectively are going to take to do what is right by the victims and by the residents, and in so doing, mending the city's reputation against a national shame that has been brought down on Johnson City? And number four, as you've heard from many residents tonight and from the questions, this format is not conducive to a dialogue. Now, to increase transparency and accountability and to provide clear answers to residents, I'm asking you, will you host a public town hall with residents? And if not, will you participate in one if organizations that are doing civic work in our city are organizing one? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Ginger Keller-Ferguson.
Good evening. I have lived in Johnson City for about 30 years. For the last 15, I've also been a business owner here. I come before you not only as a taxpayer and a business owner, but also as someone who is accustomed to coming up with creative solutions to social problems. The nature of my work, I'm speaking here tonight because fellow business owners and our nonprofit professionals all over the community have been reaching out to me left and right, asking, "What can we do about what's happened here?" Our nonprofit community and small business owners, myself included, have serious concerns about the national media attention our city has received, not only in relation to the settlement, but in the events that precipitated it. We're already facing economic challenges and uncertainty. We're concerned about the broader economic impacts of this situation on our local economy. What is this going to do to our ability to garner investment in our region and bring businesses to our area? Digital nomads like me are here for the quality of life. I could do my job from anywhere, I chose here. I'm not so confident in that quality of life anymore. It's undermined many of our faith in our safety and our security. Before I go any further, I have read all 48 pages of the Daigle Report. I appreciate that the city has already invested in a comprehensive evaluation and review of the police department's operations and a set of recommendations for implementation. I understand some, maybe most, of these recommendations have been implemented, and I also understand that perhaps the city felt a little hamstrung in communicating with us because of ongoing litigation and investigations. But we do need greater transparency and accountability from you. We need an ongoing dialogue with our leaders, not just what the media reports to us or us standing here talking at you. We don't want to talk at you, we want to talk with you, okay? Our community roundtables are great, but we need some variation in scheduling there to accommodate working residents that can't all be in the middle of the day, guys. Most importantly, we need an ongoing public evaluation and data to let us know whether things are actually improving. If implementing the Daigle recommendations is working, great. We need to shout it from the rooftops. We need to tell our story of redemption. We've got to get there, but we need to tell our story of redemption. We're worried about the economic impacts, very long-term, of this reputational damage. We've hit rock bottom here, and it's going to take nothing short of excellence to redeem Johnson City. Sensationalized or not, we've got to do meaningful work around our reputation, inside and out, and prove it. I could share ideas all night, but I do want to end with one quick one. We used to get these great water quality reports. We need a public safety report. Don't park it on the internet or put it in a press release. Mail it to every home, please.
Thank you. Next, we have Joseph Martin.
Thank you for letting me come up here and speak, and some people probably said I don't have a list of questions or nothing, so I guess I'm just kind of winging it. But I've lived here most of my life, and a $28 million settlement is the craziest thing I've ever heard. I mean, innocent people don't settle stuff for $28 million. I just, I'm baffled by this settlement, that if there's guilty people, let's just litigate it out and trot them out there, and clear the air, and bring it out, and do what may. You know, I mean, you're talking about taking away, what, 60, 70% of the fund balance to pay this thing off and kind of make it go away? From where I'm sitting, it sounds like, you know, there's things to be covered up because people who don't have anything to hide don't say, "Hey, let's take it to court, and let's bring it out there." And if there's people that need to be brought up and charged if they were doing guilty stuff, then bring those people up. You know, if people were just incompetent, incompetence is not something that you get... You know, you don't get paid for incompetence. We may be able to do better, but it's not something that's, you know, you would bankrupt the city to take care of. And, you know, it seems to me that this is going to take a long time to recover from spending this kind of money. You know, I don't know what the plan is to come up with that, but I pay a lot of taxes already to the city of Johnson City, and I'm not looking forward to paying more for things that we had nothing to do about, you know? And so, then my other question, I know you guys don't answer questions, but it seems like $1 million is a pretty low amount of insurance for a city this size. I don't understand why our liability insurance is only $1 million. I mean, if we had reinsurance or something like that to the tune of $10 million or $20 million, I'd guarantee some insurance company would probably be fighting on our behalf, and we wouldn't just be saying, "Well, let's just settle this thing and go away." So, I don't know, I guess that's my comments. But to me, it looks like we're guilty if we're settling this thing, and if we're not guilty, then why don't we just let it play out in public? And that's, I guess, what I got to say.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Abigail Honeycutt.
Yeah, hey, Mr. Hunter. I spoke with you about eight weeks ago at a City Commission meeting discussing the alcohol hours, and since then, the city I've devoted my entire life to, a tiny magical city, has become forever infamed by becoming the country's, the biggest city in the country, to let go a most prolific predator. I live a really small life, and I'm not a big fan of systems, and I don't spend a lot of time hanging out with people in suits, sitting on their pedestals. You really, really, really had to make a lot of people really unhappy to get them here. My life is small, and it was in the hospitality industry. There were 400 reports. Most of those girls were my girls for 20 years. Mr. Hunter, I want to speak to you directly. There is such a thing as tone deaf, there's such a thing as will for ignorance, and then there's something brand new I've discovered, and it's vicious cruelty and it's thoughtlessness. With everything going on in this city, the last time I stood in front of you, you made me say my government name, my home address, and then you put that information on a public YouTube channel. That is utterly unsafe. In order to have the privilege to even speak with you, I have to expose my address. Then, you told me, "You made eye contact, sir." You said, "I would love to answer your questions via email." And I emailed every person sitting here, twice, in a group, respectfully, questions and concerns. I have not had a response. And that's a lot of things going on that don't have much to do with where we're at with Sean Williams, but actually has everything to do with it, has everything to do with the alcohol hours. Kathy, we know that prohibition-era methods do not make women more safe, they make them less safe. We know that, that's in data. You're a city manager, you're in the top 8% of earners, you have education and resources that far outpaces mine, and my data is fact-based, my data is science-based. And in August 2023, Ms. Ball, you held a press conference, you looked at those young ladies, and you said that they were partially at fault for their assaults. You said that, that happened. And I'm done talking about systems, numbers, or data because the person that spoke before me last time, he had eight minutes, and I ergo know that exceptions can be made, but I feel confident you're going to give me three, so I'll cut it off here because I am not going to speak to systems or numbers, I am going to speak to names. Say them, say them. So, Ms. Kathy, this is Laura Shay. She was 23 years old. Woman to woman, you have a daughter. She is young, she is beautiful, and she left the apartment that you tried to buy with Shannon Castillo...
Thank you, Ms. Abigail.
You're very welcome. With Shannon Castillo, she died, she's never coming back, she can't speak, but we can. That was you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Allison Owens. Allison Owens?
Hi, I'm Allison Owens. I don't really have much more to say than people who have already said things much more eloquent than I. But I grew up next to the Trents, and I didn't know those details about Laura until I read that article. And it's a shame that there are people sitting in this room who are connected to that, and these police officers, how, why should we have any confidence in the police that are standing here in this room when we're paying $28 million to cover up crimes that they've committed? It doesn't make any sense. I was born and raised here, I've never heard of anything like this, and what will our future be like now that we're spending all of this money on something that the people who are paying for it had nothing to do with? Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Jacob Lu Allen.
First, I want to thank the City Commission for adding us to the agenda and giving us this opportunity. I really do sincerely appreciate that. Before I get into the main subject of my discussion, I want to read a short passage from Psalms, Chapter 82, verses 2 through 4, and then say a short prayer. "How long will you defend the unjust and show partiality to the wicked? Defend the weak and the fatherless. Uphold the cause of the poor and the oppressed. Rescue the weak and needy, deliver them from the hand of the wicked." Well, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to pray that this time will be fruitful, that ideas will be shared, and that justice will be done, and that the weak will be protected. I want to believe that everyone in this room wants to do justice to the most vulnerable in our city. I also believe many in this room feel justice has not been done. Furthermore, we feel a defense of silence and inertia has been used to shield systems and people from accountability. It is my hope to push a couple ideas that can satiate these concerns that thrive in a vacuum. First, I would request that the internal investigation be performed. It's been shielded with claims of litigation preventing it, but as mentioned before, the Daigle Report has made it clear that that investigation should have been performed. I don't know how the DA and the TBI can make declarations of the sanctity of the JCPD without such an investigation. The lack of information of an internal investigation has hampered other people's pursuits for justice, and it is necessary if the citizens are to know that we have found the truth. Second, I would request, as I have suggested before, that we conduct another third-party audit. The Daigle Report, along with its conclusions in regard to sexual assault investigation, made troubling comments in regards to the evidence lockup. They described the JCPD's evidence lockup as archaic. The poor state of the evidence lockup added months to the completion of that report, and it even required the Daigle Group to visit in person to assess its suitability, given that that is typically an audit that they do remotely and just receive a report from the city. Given the current state of the broken trust between the JCPD and the citizens, I do not think an assurance from this council or from the JCPD will be enough. That is why I am requesting more investigation, third-party audits, so we can get more information and understand what the truth of this matter is. I hope and pray that these steps can help us all find solutions to rescue the weak and to deliver them from the hands of wicked people like Sean Williams.
Thank you. And that concludes public comments, so I will close public comment.
Mayor, the next order of business is item 5.1. This is citizens' concerns regarding settlement in BP Itto versus the City of Johnson City.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. I prepared some comments I would like to share on this particular agenda item. There are several points I want to speak to, given the fact that we have open litigation and the importance of the topic to us, to all of us. And I want to make sure that I don't miss anything, and I don't think that this is a topic to shoot from the hip without thinking through it ahead of time. So I ask for a little grace as I go through my comments, and I hope it answers some questions and provides some peace of mind to residents. First of all, I want to say on behalf of the commission and city management to thank you, to those of you who came out tonight and spoke. There was some good input and some constructive ideas, we appreciate that. As elected officials, it is our... As elected officials, it is our duty to listen to our constituents, and we, we hear you, and we're listening, and we appreciate you. Our commission meetings are just one way to do this. There are many other methods to share your thoughts, such as phone conversations, in-person meetings, and emails. And so please reach out to us with, with your thoughts and concerns. There's no doubt that Shawn Williams and his, his horrible criminal acts have had a profound impact on our community. What he did has deeply affected our entire community, especially the victims. These are uncharted waters, and I want you to know, we are committed to navigating these challenges with the community's best interests guiding our way. We understand that the community is frustrated that the city has been restricted from discussing the situation due not only to open litigation, but also a gag order from our courts. Now, one, one of the lawsuits has been settled, but two remain open, which still restricts our ability to discuss these matters in public meetings. But we do hear you. We hear your concerns, and many of them are valid. You know, all of us up here, we live, we live here too. This is our home as well. Some of us grew up here. We've raised children or are raising children in this community. I have two daughters. One of them will be attending our hometown university this coming fall, the same university that my wife and I attended. I would not raise my daughters in a place or send them to a place that I did not feel that they would be safe. Each of us up here have a different story on how we, how we got involved in serving this city. But regardless of what motivated and inspired us, we all serve for one reason, because we have a deep care for this city and, and the residents. I speak for all of us in saying, we make these difficult decisions, always trying to do what is right and in the community's best interest, because it is our community as well. So last week, we learned from General Steve Finney that the TBI and the FBI have completed their investigation of our, our police department and found no credible evidence of corruption, bribery, or criminal activity. But while there was no evidence of criminal wrongdoing, there were shortcomings in the handling of some police investigations. That leads us to the civil litigation and, and, and the risk to the city. The department's deficiencies combined with the heinous criminal acts of Shawn Williams could have led to a verdict in the civil class action lawsuit that was recently settled to, it, it, it could have led to a verdict totaling more than our entire city's annual budget. Settling this case eliminated that risk. The settlement also represents our commitment to support the victims and to help them move forward with their lives. We want to be clear, Shawn Williams was solely responsible for his crimes and has been rightfully convicted. And our hearts go out to each and every individual affected by, by his criminal acts. It's also important to know that less, less than two weeks after concerns about Shawn Williams came to light, the new city manager took steps to ensure transparency and accountability. She began looking for an independent expert to audit the police department, as has been mentioned, the Daigle report. That action was swift and decisive to ensure our community was safe and that our police department was operating as it, in, in a way that was appropriate. This audit is and has been available on our website. The audit, it discovered deficiencies, and the city made sure they were corrected as quickly as possible. With the support of the commission, the city manager and the police department took the following actions. We approved funds to hire 21 police officers and create a dedicated special victims unit. We provided funds for the Washington County Family Justice Center, which serves victims of abuse and sexual assault. This commission also supported the Children's Advocacy Center by funding an additional forensic interviewer to assist child victims of abuse who face the task of testifying in prosecutions. The police department updated and implemented its policies and procedures to protect and support sexual assault victims. The police department has also implemented all of General Finney's sexual assault protocols. In addition, the JCDP, JCPD has revamped its reporting systems to improve the tracking of these cases. As I mentioned, we have a new city manager, but we also have a new police chief and new leadership within our police department. The changes that have been made are nothing short of a major overhaul of our police department, and we are committed to continually reviewing our processes and growing as a department. This is just the beginning, but today we can assure you, our community, assure our community, that the police department has improved how it investigates sexual assault cases. JCPD is a better agency, and Johnson City is better for it. All victims of crime deserve the very best service we can provide. It's our, it's what our community expects, and it's what our community deserves. And they also expect appropriate oversight, and this commission is committed to holding this police, the police department to the, to the highest possible standard. I thank you all for your time, and I, I need a break if, if, if I could entertain a motion for a recess.
Have a recess.
Yeah. Is it going to work? Is there a motion? Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion for a, a, a recess.
Sure. Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Okay. We're going to take a break for a minute.[1062.65][1062.65](CLOSING OF关门)[1063.65]
I want to thank everybody for allowing us some time. I'll call the meeting back to order. Ms. Ball, next on the agenda?
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is item 6.1. It's Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing April 2025 as Donate Life Month.
Nick, good to have you here. Would you like to talk a little bit before I read the proclamation?
You can read it and we'll talk afterwards.
Okay, alright.
Whereas Tennessee Donor Services, TDS, is a donate life agency and nonprofit organization dedicated to saving and improving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation throughout Tennessee, and is one of 57 organ procurement organizations throughout the nation. And whereas each organ donor hero can give the gift of life to eight people, and each tissue donor can improve another 75 lives. And whereas more than 100,000 American men, women, and children, 3,000 of whom are Tennesseans, are waiting for life-saving organ transplants. And whereas the most effective way to address this health crisis is to educate and to encourage Tennesseans to commit to registering their decision to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor in the Donate Life Tennessee Registry, donatelifetn.org, or at their local driver services center. And now therefore I, John F. Hunter II, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Donate Life Month in Johnson City, Tennessee to support saving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation.
There you go. Yes, sir.
So it's been a pretty heavy meeting, and I feel kinda awkward doing this, but it'll be alright. So like the mayor said, every day 20 people die waiting on a life-saving transplant. More than 100,000 people right now on the waiting list, including 2,700 in Tennessee. And so the more people we're able to get signed up and registered to become organ donors, the higher chance we have of saving somebody's life. Like I said, one organ donor can save up to eight lives, one tissue donor can improve the lives of 75 people, and one cornea donor can restore sight to two people. This is the third year in a row Johnson City has been kind enough to recognize April as Donate Life Month. And this year, for the first time ever, we got all three cities, the tri-cities, to issue proclamations for us. So I'm grateful to Johnson City, grateful to the mayor, and I would just encourage everyone out there to please sign up to register to become an organ donor. We're working every day just to try to save lives. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Ms. Ball?
Yes, Mayor, as you make your way up, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
You've got one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next item is item 6.2. It's a presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association, and better known as GFOA, Distinguished Budget Award for the City of Johnson City for fiscal year 2024-25.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As you may recall, last year, the city applied for the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award, and we received that award for the first time in over 20 years. So the budget office and the staff as a whole did a fantastic job. So we applied again this year and are happy to report that we have received the award for the second year in a row now. But I also wanted to make mention, because it hits at the heart of the commission's strategic goals, we were recognized for the strategic goals and strategies portion of the budget document, which is something that we want to work to improve on in the upcoming years. So I would like to ask Mr. Dustin Thompson and Mr. John Stedman to come forward and receive this award on behalf of the city. And we'd also like to recognize our communications and marketing staff, specifically LeAnn Fama and Nick Harrison for their work in this document as well. Thank you.
Great job, guys. I'll hand it to...
Just wanted to thank the city manager, and the deputy and assistant city managers, and the commission, and Ms. Laus, in their support of this effort. As Mr. Willis said, it had been well over 20 years since we had received this award, and we received it last year. And we were very pleased to inform the city commission and the citizens that we received it for a second year in a row. The special recognition that we received for the strategic goals and strategy section, Mr. Stedman, that was all him. And I want to publicly thank you, sir, for the work that you have done on that, and the improvement that you have made, improved months, plural, improvements you have made, not only to the budget document, not only, but to the budget office, but for the citizens of Johnson City. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. And Mayor, now, as you make your way back up, we have the consent agenda, and I will turn it back over to you to see which items the commission wants to have more information on.
Thank you. We'll start to my left with Commissioner Brock. Are there any items that you would like to...
I would. I'd like to pull 7.2.2 on the security vestibules of the school system.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Wise?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Fowler?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, 7.2.2. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, if you could just give us an update. We've done quite a bit of work on many of our schools, and so is this the remaining ones, or maybe let us know what that's all about?
Yes, ma'am. So we're talking about four schools in the system, and they would be the last four that to get the same improvements that would be consistent with what we've done at other schools. So it's Mountain View Elementary, Cherokee Elementary, Northside, and Topper Academy.
Well, I see our superintendent, I mean, our chairman of the school board is here. Is anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Kinnick?
No, we appreciate it.
These were our four biggest ones left, so that's why we need to bid them out instead of in-house. And we appreciate you helping us out with that, and look forward to getting them all done during the summer. Not quite.
That adds to...
So there is, there is, there is a, we did build it in such a way to take advantage of summer break at the, particularly at the three elementary schools, so that a lot of the heavy demolition and steel framing and concrete work and such should be done by the time the kids come back. So that would, you know, just help ease those projects along and keep it safer for when the building is occupied.
So that adds the security features then to all the schools.
So the secure vestibules is the focus, and so the two layers of security and security film and secure transaction windows and all those things require some interior renovations in order to make those things happen. But we've got some good plans, ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Laus?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Commissioners, the next item up for the commission's consideration is item 8.1. This is an annexation by owner of Hopper Road. This is to consider approval of a preliminary resolution calling for a public hearing on a voluntary annexation of approximately 13.68 acres along Hopper Road and Indian Ridge Road.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Bryce McNamara, planner with the Development Services Department. Item 8.1 and 8.2 on our agenda this evening are tied together, first of which is the preliminary resolution, which is the consideration of the annexation of the parcel itself. And then item 8.2 is the ordinance, which is the consideration of the zoning assignment. And these two are tied together. As Ms. Ball stated, this is along Hopper Road. Looking at our timeline here, this will be the third public meeting that this was brought forth in. The request to proceed was approved by the city commission on August 1st, 2024, and then moving forward to the planning commission recommendation of the plan of services and zoning assignment on September 10th of 2024. Since then, we have received many comments and have taken a lot of time to do further evaluations into this specific area, as well as waiting for the applicant to move forward and seeing what the process was with that. Now we are at April 3rd, so like I mentioned, this is the preliminary resolution, which finalizes the date for the public hearing on annexation, and then the first reading of the zoning assignment. So there are no public hearings this evening, nor on the second reading. All the public hearings will be scheduled, and that will be finalized as a date on May 1st, on the third reading, which would also be the final approval of both items. I believe we're all relatively familiar with this site location at this point. We're looking right here. This is Archer's Point, that was mentioned a few times in the public comment, Hopper Road, Indian Ridge Road, Woodland Elementary, Harbor Free down here at the intersection of Hopper and West Market, and the West Market Street Walmart down here. The site is pretty well delineated by how the vegetation is constructed here, so this is about the general shape. This is a request by owner consent for annexation, so this is voluntary, for 13.68 acres. It does have frontage on Indian Ridge Road and Hopper Road. These parcels are contiguous to the current city limits. The city limits are highlighted or tinted in that gray color. That is what the current city limits are right now. This location is also within the urban growth boundary, as well as the urban service area. With the zoning assignment, the request is for RP 3, Planned Residential 3 District, for the development of 105 townhouses. As a requirement of the RP districts prior to development, there is a concept plan requirement. However, with the annexation process, the concept plan is not considered binding, as it's not actually a consideration until it is part of the zoning code itself, and it is not yet. So we are considering the annexation of the property. But with that, the RP 3 would permit 8.5 units per acre for this specific site of just over 13 acres. This would be 116 units for the site area. The concept plan does propose 105, which comes out to a density calculation at 7.7 units per acre. And like I mentioned, this current concept plan is for visual purposes this evening. We are not finalizing or binding them to this at this time. This will come back to the planning and city commission at a later date for final approval. Taking a look at the zoning, obviously, this is not within the bounds of the Johnson City zoning code, but it does adjoin a few different parcels, some of them being R2, which is a low-density residential district, and then the R2B, which is a variation just with a smaller lot size. Looking at the Washington County zoning, this is currently zoned R1, as we can see with the bulk of what is currently outside of the city in this location. Everything that's colored yellow would be that R1, which essentially correlates with the R2 of our zoning district, which is a primary single-family residential zoning district. You do have a large area of A1 here, and a few parcels down here, which is general agricultural district. Looking at the current land use, on the site right now, there is an existing residence... Looking at the current land use, on the site right now, there is an existing residence right here and then a barn right here. Other than that, the majority of the site is currently vacant. We do have single-family residences abutting, as you can see. The majority of Hopper Road here and then what is in the city, a couple of the subdivision and across the street, this is single-family in this location as notated by the yellow color here. Looking at our future land use map, there's not a delineation in our current future land use map between any density restrictions. It is just plain residential, so there's not multifamily, single-family, but that residential is seen here and shown by the yellow color. To get a little bit more detailed, we can use the Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map, while not yet adopted. This can give us further guidance using the place type system. This assigns this the neighborhood residential district as well as the entirety of the frontage of Indian Ridge Road and Hopper Road. Looking at a couple of the characteristics that we can expect from a future land use map, what the goal is of this place type is you can see the very low appropriate levels of industrial as well as office and then commercial, very little consideration for retail and restaurant, lower consideration for multifamily uses, higher for single-family. However, we do have a reasonable consideration there for quadplexes and townhomes as seen on the concept plan and as is proposed, just the same as we have consideration for institutional uses, such as it could be a church or a school or something of that nature. Looking at about the same area and density in the surrounding area, this shows a map of the currently applied zoning districts within what is in the corporate boundary of Johnson City now, at the same frontage on Indian Ridge Road as shown by the white line here, in between the intersections or the connection points with the two arterial roads, that being North State of Franklin Road here and West Market Street here. We can see that there are a multitude of different zoning districts applied to this frontage. That lighter yellow color is going to indicate a zoning district that does not permit multifamily uses and is single-family, maybe with a couple other uses, but primarily single-family only. The darker yellow color is going to be things that do permit multifamily. Now, you could also have single-family and a multifamily district, but it increases intensity as you go up. So, you can see we have R1, R2, R2A, B, C, R3, R4, RP2, RP2, and then RP3, which would match the request here. Really, the point here is that along the collector's street of Indian Ridge Road, there, it is primarily residential. There is no commercial or industrial uses, as is consistent with the anticipated place type. There's a vast difference of types of residential uses. It is primarily single-family, however, they do not exactly match everything. Huntington Green is quite different from Archer's Point, but they are the same land use to the zoning code. You have apartments over here and you have some other, like RP2, single-family houses and then RP2, you can have some different things in there. With the single-family residences, by nature, their density is going to be a little bit less, so it's about 2 and 3/4 acre along this frontage here. Like we mentioned, RP3 is going to allow much more than that at 8.5 units per acre. There are a variety of multifamily uses, as I mentioned. Those are notated by the red Xs on here. I put four that directly front Indian Ridge Road. These have densities that range anywhere from 6 to 12 units per acre. And just to mention once again that the proposal of the concept plan, while not binding, is about 7.7 units per acre. Plan of Services was created. This was sent out to all city departments that are listed on this slide here, and they were given the opportunity to provide comments and the feasibility of providing city services if the corporate boundary was expanded to this. Just to note exactly with this condition and the location of this lot, it is quite interesting that this is not in the city. However, it is contiguous in a few different places, and it realistically has city boundary on all four sides of it, so extension is realistically minimal. Cost-benefit analysis was also prepared as a part of this annexation. In speaking with the applicant, this was an anticipated two-year build-out. That's why you can see a lot of the numbers in the spreadsheet, not starting until year three, when occupancy would begin theoretically. A few comments, schools calculated an additional 23 students and noted that adequate capacity was available at Woodland Elementary and Middle School and High School. Police Department did note that a slight concern with their platoons not being at full force and an additional officer for patrol would be needed, and Fire Department can expect a generation of 32 additional calls for service annually. I think this was covered quite well in the public comment stage. Everybody that I have, I've spoken to or been contacted with either spoke tonight or I have talked to and informed that this is going on tonight, and we have many comments about the roads, obviously, the current conditions. We talked about site distance. We talked about the need for improvements, the narrowness, safety concerns, especially being near the elementary school, as well as the traffic congestion already on these troublesome conditions of the roads, and then especially the safety issue and the difficulty for turning onto West Market Street, either from the Hopper Road intersection or from the Indian Ridge Road section. We do have our public work staff present this evening, Anthony Todd with Traffic. I know this has been brought to the commission in a prior work session, but we can't go over those details again, as well as concerns just generally with the introduction of multifamily residential to this vacant parcel, with the density being too high and wanting to keep the same single-family residence configuration with what is directly adjacent, as well as the impact on property values and different types of residents moving into these. Moving into some of the policies away from the not-yet-adopted Horizon 2045 plan, but what we are using currently is the Bridge Plan, I'll first go into the land use element. There's going to be a lot of talk about infill development. The underlying portion here encouraging infill development within the city. As I mentioned on the slide with the Plan of Services, while this is not currently within the bounds of the city, it does have city boundary all around it and up on both roads and especially to the north as you go back towards the downtown core. So, this essentially could be considered an infill annexation, if you will, with it being inside of the urban service area and the extension of these services being quite minimal. Land use element, objective 2.5, encouraging a variety of housing opportunities. As we mentioned, this is, there is a lot of single-family residences in this area, however, with the location on a collector road and the place type noting that a certain level of consideration is appropriate for quadplexes and townhomes as is proposed, this would introduce a different type of housing opportunity for the parcel. Moving into the growth and services element, first, policy nine, once again promoting infill development as an efficient means for accommodating growth, and then moving to policy 20, which hits on this pretty exactly, is attracting annexations to fill in developed and developing areas. Once again, as mentioned, this is in the urban service area and providing services was cost-effective, as shown by the financial analysis. One more slide from the Bridge Plan. This is also in the urban growth and services element. This is a map number eight, which is areas that are recommended for annexation. There are two colors applied to this map. One is red, one is orange. Those are two tiers of areas recommended for annexation. The red is strongly recommended. The orange is recommended without a priority, but it is noted in the Bridge Plan that they are near existing city limits, and it would be recommended to annex them to get consistent land use regulation and land use control, so you're not going by two different codes with this bordering the city. So, you can see the location here in one of those orange areas. So, moving away from the Bridge Plan recommendation, going to the staff recommendation, just to reiterate, this recommendation is not including the consideration of the concept plan, as that will come back later for further approval. That will just be a requirement prior to development because of the RP district that is requested. This recommendation is going to be for the zoning assignment and for the preliminary resolution, the annexation itself. Staff recommends approval because the proposed zoning district is compatible with the future land use plan and the place type within the Horizon 2045 plan. There are existing multifamily developments with similar densities along Indian Ridge Road within a mile on both sides, and this proposal does promote a variety of housing types that are in close proximity to the city services, once again, as mentioned in the Bridge Plan. And just once more, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval on September 10th, 2024.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Has this been back to planning since September?
It has not, no.
Okay. And so, the site plan, right now, we're being asked annexation and zoning code application. They can't do, they have no entitlement under RP3 until they have a site plan approved at a later date? Is that right?
Correct. Part of the reading in the RP, any RP development, is that the concept plan must be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners prior to development.
We've got two items, as you mentioned earlier, for this particular property, just as clarification or a process. If one was to be approved and the other not, so for instance, the annexation, if the annexation's approved, does that mean it's in the city, or does that mean the property owner can accept that approval or decline it?
So, with the two items, we would need a consistent vote on both of them and reference each other.
Yeah.
But with the preliminary resolution, what this is doing is calling for the public hearing, so this is not a final action.
Okay.
That will be done on third reading. Upon an approval of this, what would be done is that letters would be sent out, signs would be posted on the property.
Gotcha.
This would be posted, and so the entire public notification process, and then this would come back to you May 1st, and that's when the public hearing, final action.
Got you. Thank you.
Well, and for me, I've got a couple of questions, but we do have two agenda items on this, and for me, they're two completely different worlds. And, you know, I think the first item I have less questions about than the second item.
Go for it.
And so, uh...
You said that better than I did. I don't, I don't think I said that at all, but I was trying to.
And so, I don't know, just for procedural, for me, it's like, should we vote on the first item and get to the second item for discussion if it needs to, or, because most of my questions are, you know, there was good comments from the neighbors, and I think it was Mr. Gwynn pointed out where the closest RP3 zoning is in relation to this. Can you point it out just one more time, kind of where the...
Right here.
Okay.
So, here's the Indian Ridge frontage, it goes right about here.
And part of the reason is kind of infill development's pretty, I think, important to us and get creative on the future on housing and town, but right now with the county, it's zoned R1, right?
R1, yeah.
Which is pretty similar to R2 for us.
Correct. Yeah, would not currently permit multifamily developments, but there's always an opportunity for them to keep it in the county, rezone it under the county, and get multifamily, and then...
Well, they'd have to go to the county commission for that.
They would go to the county commission.
They're even less fun than us.
Our planning commission would review it and give them a recommendation, but ultimately it would go through the county.
I know, I'm a big believer of kind of stepping your density between spots, and it does look like there's a lot of R2 around that and very little R3, so it's a, you know, this many units is pretty drastic change.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm sort of struggling procedurally, like, from an infill standpoint, it makes sense to annex it. That's the first item we're being asked to vote on, but I have grave concerns about the density, and so my suspicion is if we vote yes on the first one and no on the second one, what happens? I mean, and I don't know how anybody's going to vote, I just know how I might vote.
Because the first one doesn't have, it has to come in with a zone on it, right? So, if we vote for annexation...
Correct. Yeah, you could not annex the property without assigning it a zoning.
And so, they almost need to be done...
That's why we need a consistent, either yes and yes or no and no.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Just to clarify procedurally, since the Planning Commission has recommended approval for an RP3, the commission can send it back to the Planning Commission to consider a different zoning assignment, but you, so if you want it to continue annexation, you would just send it back to Planning Commission for a different approval.
But ultimately, wouldn't that really be the applicant's choice?
Yes.
And sending it back to the Planning Commission sort of cuts out the most important stakeholder, and that's the applicant.
Correct. So, if the City Commission wants to move forward with discussing the annexation but has trouble with the RP district, RP3, we would, you could recommend it being back to the Planning Commission. We would work with the applicant to see what zoning assignment they are comfortable moving forward, and it would go back to the Planning Commission for approval and recommendation to you guys.
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to deny that annexation with this zoning.
Yeah, it seems like these ought to come parceled as one item, given, I mean, I don't know procedurally.
You know, the developer can choose to spend some more work to change and come with a new request if they choose. You know, I think annexation's a good thing, but I think the zoning's not appropriate.
So, you were making a motion on...
I'm just making a motion to deny the annexation.
I would second that.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Laus?
Commissioner...
I would just offer one comment. I mean, we are supportive of the annexation idea. It's just the density in relation to the neighboring properties and traffic and Hopper Road, and so I don't want to be misunderstood, because I don't think I've ever voted against one of these.
And you can amend or change a motion, too. I mean, it...
Oh, no. I mean, I think the motion, I just wanted to clarify that I'm not one who's super quick to deny these.
I mean, we can annex it with a recommendation of our...
I don't think we can, that's what they just said.
And said, you can send it back, said we're not...
Yes, so if you want further consideration for the annexation, you would not be approving a primary resolution tonight. You would be tabling it and sending it back to Planning Commission for a new approval. So, it would have a new primary resolution, a new zoning assignment, if the applicant decides to move forward with that recommendation. If the annexation is voted no tonight, there is a waiting period statutorily, I believe, of six months before they can reapply for an annexation.
Part, and I'm going to continue a little bit more, as we just heard two meetings ago about the roads that need to be improved, and I think it's hard for me to feel like this is the right move right now after hearing that.
Well, I think we offered a remediation plan, but it's going to take quite a while to do it, and mainly, we've been talking about Indian Ridge, but what about Hopper Road? I mean, that's even more narrow than Indian Ridge.
And I'm not sure it's fixable.
Yeah, and so, people will be leaving this development, turning right to get out on Market Street on that end, too, and there's no traffic light there.
So, I...
I live at the bottom, I live at the bottom of the, I mean, at the top of the hills. They come over that hill at speeds exceeding 50 miles an hour sometimes. Speed bumps have no effect.
Yeah, we probably should...
I'll just restate my motion.
Well, I'm wondering if, is the applicant here, I mean, with, I mean, given the statutory delay, I'm wondering if the applicant would have a preference between it being denied or sent back to Plan, I mean, you're going to have to go through the whole process again, but at least then, if you come back with something that better comports to the surrounding properties, is there...
You can come, please come on up. Sorry.
State your name.
I'm Jeanie Fox Thomas, and this is my sister.
I'm Donna Fox Hobbs. I live at 202 Gray Road in Jonesboro.
And I live at 482 Lake Breeze Drive in Plumble.
Thank you.
So, our preference would be to send it back to the Planning to consider the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you coming up.
So, that motion would need to say what, just referring it back to Planning Commission and Planning Staff?
Yeah, I'm going to amend my motion.
And I'll amend my second.
I'm going to... I'm going to amend my motion to approve the annexation.
Okay, the attorney just did, ah, that's all. And parliamentarian.
My suggestion would be if you have a motion in a second, that's on the floor. I think you should vote on that, and then again, if you would like to make a motion...
Could we withdraw?
I think you've already had a motion in a second. I think you could vote it, if that's voted down, then you could entertain the motion that you're sending it back to the Planning Commission. That's the commissioner's desire.
Okay, I'll call the vote. Ms. Lous?
Repeat the, repeat the motion in the second.
Right now, the motion is to deny the annexation.
And I have Vice Mayor motioning and Commissioner Wise seconding.
And so a no vote would force us to have to do the, do another motion. Okay, thank you.
I think we're ready, Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
No.
Commissioner Fowler?
No.
Commissioner Wise?
No.
Vice Mayor Cox?
No.
Mayor Hunter?
No. Is there a new motion?
So the, the new motion would be to refer it back to Planning, Planning Commission, Planning Staff, and the applicant for review and revision of the land use question.
I'll second that.
Ms. Lous?
Hold on, who motioned?
I guess I did.
Commissioner Wise.
Second was Commissioner Brock.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Thank you.
And and that would be the same, I'm going to ask our attorney to help us with the second one. Would that be the same, or would they need to vote on the next item, which is an ordinance assigning the planning? Would that also need to have a vote?
I think that would also need to have a vote similar to what, again, to accomplish what the commission has already set out in their first motion. I think it would need a similar motion.
I would restate my motion to that effect.
I'll restate my second.
Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioners, the next item is item 8.3, which is ordinance 4908-25. This is the first reading. It's an ordinance to abandon all of the public right-of-way on Circle Court.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a request to abandon all of the public right-of-way on Circle Court. To orient the commission with the request, the Circle Court is indicated in the red here, and we are on Eddie Williams Red, so our meeting is off the grid here, but it is visible as you come into the the property. It's the old Johnson City Housing Authority Fairview Project. The request is to abandon the 460-foot right-of-way on Circle Court. It is the entire length. All departments and agencies have reviewed it, and there's no concerns over the abandonment. Public sewer easements are being retained per the survey. Water Sewer has requested for these easements to be retained, and in additional review, there may be some extension of that easement for storm drain and storm piping that is over that easement as well. So that may be at a later date during the sunset when they submit.
I think we met with the Housing Authority about this a few weeks ago. I would make a motion to approve.
We recommend it, too.
I'll second.
Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
The next item is item 8.4. This is ordinance number 4909-25, and this is the first reading for an ordinance to revise and update the Code of the City of Johnson City, to revise the 2018 International Fire Prevention Code, Appendix D107.1 by amending Title VII, Chapter II of the Code of the City of Johnson City, or any other ordinances or parts of ordinances heretofore passed and repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances to conflict herewith. We have Deputy City Manager Randy Trivett with us.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager Ball, Mayor Hunter. I appreciate your attention to this. This ordinance is to kind of correct some issues that we've been facing over the over the past few years since the, this code was adopted. This code was actually adopted back in 2021. It is the 2018 Fire Prevention Code, along with all of our standard building codes. The reason for the delay in adopting it was the City Commission at that time asked to wait until the state adopted the 2018 codes before the city would adopt them. So when these were adopted at the City Commission meeting, specifically the fire code adopted all the appendices, and the appendices are always something that would add additional measures to the existing code. The existing code is the minimum standard, and so when the appendices are put in there, it's always adding some additional things. And so to draw your attention to this one particular item, the, when the code was adopted, the International Fire Code, it adopted appendices A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N, and the one that we have some issues with is appendices D. And so what we're asking you all to consider is in appendices D, for a development that had more than 30 units at the time of the development, it had to have a secondary exit for fire access, for fire apparatus access is what they call it. And having that second exit is always really good for fire departments to get in and get out with 30 or more houses. Now, prior to that, the number was up of 50 for years ago, but now the appendices made it a 30, and sometimes what we've ran into is we have flag-shaped lots, or lots that do not adjoin another road and have very narrow frontages, so you can't meet the separation distances to have two exits. It's like you can't have them side by side. You have to have a certain distance to separate them. And so with these flag-shaped lots getting developed, or these narrow road frontages getting developed where they come in and then they widen out in the back, it made it very difficult because you could get 30 houses pretty easily on that. And so our recommendation is to change that number to 50. That's the only thing that changes. We're still accepting the the appendices as they are written, except for changing from 30 to 50, to allow more of these lots to be able to be developed with smaller numbers of units on those.
Okay. Any questions?
Before we adopted this, I think that was the rule, wasn't it?
Years ago, it was the rule.
I mean, in years ago, you mean, pre 2020, 21, when we adopted this, I think.
I'm not so sure. I think prior to that, maybe the 2012 had that same thing in it, but it was prior to that, it was 50.
Okay.
And and it started changing when cities were growing. There's some other cities in the state of Tennessee that have that, but there's, there are surrounding cities that do not have it, so to get some consistency in our region and in our surrounding cities, that's why we're asking for 50. And we've worked with the fire department and the fire marshal to make sure. I, I meant to say this earlier and and it kind of slipped my mind, but since these were adopted, there's been some changes into our subdivision regulations, so we require wider roads now, and we also require larger turning radiuses in cul-de-sacs, so that helps assist with the fire apparatus access in and out and to be able to fight fires the way they need to.
Because point 24 out across from Wingair Park, I think, was originally platted with 50 units, and it had a single point of access, but it had wider lanes and that, there's a sharp corner, and it had a, they did something funny to make the trucks be able to make the corner.
Absolutely.
And our fire department's in support of this?
Fire Department's in support of this, yes.
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mayor, the next item is, is an ordinance in the third reading, is ordinance number 4906-25. It's the third and final reading for an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, by changing from I-2 District to R-3 District for property located on Buffalo Road.
Any changes, Mr. McNamara?
What's that?
Any changes?
No changes.
Move approval.
I just wanted to update you.
Is there a second? I'll second. Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms...
And Commissioner, the last item is item 10.1, which is to consider resolution in support of the expansion of Iris Glen Environmental Center.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager Ball, Randy Trivett, Deputy City Manager. We're bringing this resolution to you because, as you know, and we've discussed in the past, our existing landfill opened in about 1993, and we have had a very successful amount of airspace and time to be able to handle all of our, the region's trash, but most importantly, our, our trash and our landfill for our solid waste in Johnson City. The landfill as it sits currently, the current permitted landfill is about 62 acres. I wanted to kind of show... Let me see if I can get this to pull up. Yes. So our current landfill has 62 acres in the footprinted area, and that's the area that's circled in red in this little area right here in the center. And we have about anywhere from 12 to 14 years of life left into our current landfill. So now's the time to start planning on what we're going to do in the future, because these processes take a little bit of time. So in our talks and conversations with waste management, they've agreed to work with TDEC and work with the city to apply for a permit to expand this up to 84 acres. Now, on the map here, we're showing an additional 54 acres, and with that possibility, if we can obtain a little bit more property that's inside this area of the 264 acres that the city already owns, that we'll extend that to anywhere from 64 to 84 acres. But that's what we're presenting with TDEC. We've already had some meetings with TDEC to get the process started. There's been some pre-engineering that's already been completed. What we're asking for now is with your support on this resolution, that we're going to move forward with geotech exploration, and we're going to move forward with more detailed engineering and and details about all of the features that are already on the site to see how well we can expand the landfill to its current size. And what that would probably do is add about another 40 to 50 years of life to the existing 12 to 14 years of life that we have now. So once this gets completed, but now this is about a two-year process, so I want to let you guys know that, that this process would take about two years to get through all the engineering, the design, the development, and moving forward with TDEC. Waste Management has agreed to pay for all this engineering, all this work that's got to be done for the next two years to get this permit through TDEC, at a cost of about one and a half million dollars. So there would be no cost to the city. We just have to show support and interest in doing it and work with them, because one of the other things that I'd like to tell you all upfront is, once we get this permit going, if you'll notice on the resolution, and and we were very careful in the wording on this, is on the very last sentence, what you guys are resolving to do, the board expresses formal approval and support for waste management to proceed with permitting, design, and construction of a lateral expansion of Iris Glen. What would have to take place is, once we get to that point, there'd have to be negotiations and work, working out for the operation and the management of the landfill, as we currently already have a contract that, with waste management, we would have to incorporate a new one, and that will take some processes as well.
Mr. Trivett, are they even approving new landfill locations or permitting those?
They are expansions.
Expansions, yeah.
The biggest thing is, right now, we, we heard there was a moratorium on new landfills, and the new landfills are very hard to get permit, permits for, but as a result of Hurricane Helene, they're allowing a lot more expansions, and they're actually expediting those permitting processes a little bit now to be able to handle all the waste that was created by Hurricane Helene.
And we're taking on a lot in our landfill?
We are taking on a lot in our landfill. Fortunately, the majority of the, the waste that we're taking on our landfill now, you can see from the road, and it's mostly dirt and field. It's really good. If you've noticed where they're dumping that dirt, and they've got dozers around the outside of where we've already capped some of the existing cells, and they're filling that in there and we're, and putting grass on that. So this spring and this summer, when the grass begins to grow, it's going to make our landfill look a lot nicer in the community on the places that have already been topped off.
Randy, does, does Waste Management paying for this, but does, is there expectation amend our current contract, or would it be, kind of have a, a separate contract for the new?
It'll, it'll be a separate contract for the new one. That's, that's what we would end up having to do. Our, our current contract was written in 1992. We've got five amendments to it, with just recently, probably about a year and a half ago, the, the Fifth Amendment that you all approved, that, that kind of outlined a lot more things to protect the city and to also take care of waste management, and it was a good, it was a win-win contract or an amendment to that contract, but what we would have to do now is, because of some of the outdated language in the original contract, we'd have to negotiate a new one, and that's what they've said as well.
Well, I remember 1992 and 93, and I would like not to be a part of a conversation about a new landfill.
Absolutely.
So I would move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
That is all that we have tonight.
Okay. I will start with Commissioner Dr. Fowler. Any comments or input?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, I'd just like to thank everybody that came out tonight, and just know that, you know, we all love our community, and we're going to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Ms... Commissioner Brock?
I'd like to talk just a minute about what happened this past weekend, and it was beautification day on Saturday. I see April shaking her head over there. I stopped down by the Farmer's Market Pavilion where they were organizing everything. They had 135 people show up who were volunteers, and they went to different places in the city, a lot downtown, probably some out in our parks. Is that right, April? And so it's a, it's a joint effort by the CVB, ETSU, kind of special services, Joey Fullerson's group, City of Johnson City, Public Works, and Parks and Rec, and they sent all these 135 people out with grabbers and and bags, and I think they picked up, do you know, April, the tonnage? I saw it one place. It was a lot. It was a lot. And I just want to kind of shout out one of our employees that I got to meet for the first time. She was with Public Works. Her name is Teresa Carter, and she just, I mean, just did an amazing job. And so we talked about how we can really go out to our community to say, we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't litter in the first place. So we've talked about this before, about doing some community effort to engage our neighborhoods and for people to get engaged and involved in keeping our, our city neat and clean, and I think there's some good ideas out there. It'd be great for us to kind of do some planning around it. And then the other thing was the wildflowers came up, and, see, April, I'm really picking on you right now, so I think we're going to see more in our parks. Is that right? And Public Works is, are going to be sowing some, some wildflower gardens this year around town, so maybe we'll get the monarch butterflies here after all. So, but thank you all for everything you did there.
I would just echo the Vice Mayor's comments. Appreciate everybody that came out. There was good input and insight into what we're, what we were able to hear today from our community. The only thing, sorry?
I'm down here.
Oh! And I had something to say.
Well, all right. Sorry about that.
No, I know one of the things you've asked that we do is make a point of reporting back on the boards and commissions we serve on, on behalf of this board, and the, the one that, one of them that I serve on is JCDA, and we met last week, a week ago tomorrow, and good progress is occurring on the tapestry at Roan Hill. We're still on track to begin the process late this year in moving the residents of John Sevier into vastly nicer accommodations, and that has been a long, long, complicated process, and so to be able to see the light at the, the end... And so to be able to see the light at the, the end of the tunnel is very encouraging. So all is on track.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And there has been some time since our last meeting, and I'm sure there's several committees that have met or boards, but, so I appreciate you reporting back on us. I guess the only other thing I would talk about is, this coming Monday morning is the Johnson City Prayer Breakfast, and you can buy tickets online at prayforjc.org, and I think it's a great time for our community. But with that, I will adjourn the meeting.